All right, it's that time again. It is four o'clock on a Sunday afternoon. It is February 27th. There we go. And we are talking about what's going to happen on exam two. So exam two is in, what is it, six days? So it is Saturday of March 6th? March 5th? March 5th? Apologies, the fourth is a Friday. So your exam is Saturday, March 5th. As before, it is at 10:00 a.m. You need to get into the exam as close to 10:00 a.m. as possible because that window will close at 10:30 and we don't want your watch to be a little bit different from our watch. So just aim for 10:00 a.m. and no later than 10:15, just to be on the safe side because I do understand the suddenly scrambling for a charger. That definitely does happen, but be prepared for that. On exam two, what we're covering is we're covering chapter 14, but not very much of it. 14.6, which is mostly how kinetics relates to temperature and specifically looking at activation energy. 14.7, which is mechanisms, which we'll talk a bit more about. And then 14.8, which are catalysts. 16, which we're actually covering the whole chapter except for 16.4. So for some of you, if y'all basically follow along in the notes and what we do in class, it's everything that we've done in class. For those of you that go ahead and investigate the book, you'll notice that we skipped over a chapter from what we did in class. So again, if you're looking at the notes, it's everything that was posted in the notes. If you're looking in the textbook, we did actually skip over something because we have not actually yet introduced delta G. So there is something that relates delta G to equilibrium, but we have not actually introduced gives for free energy yet, and we won't until later. So not that, but everything else. So that's the introduction of equilibrium, manipulating K expressions and dealing with a whole variety of equilibrium constants and as well as those ice tables. We'll take a closer look at that. Then there is actually going to be most of chapter 17. So this starts at the very beginning, which 17 is acids and bases. And we are going to start at the very beginning of the acids and bases chapter. We won't get to everything, but we're going to cover 17.1 to 17.8. So that is going to cover general bits of acids and bases. That will also cover strengths of acids and bases. It will cover acids and bases as it relates to equilibrium, wrapping back to those ice tables as well as some mathematics that go along with it. So we will stop at some point in chapter 17 and we'll pick up the rest of it for chapter, for exam three. So we'll cover all of chapter 17, but part of it before, part of it after. So you're responsible up to 17.8. That is slightly different, by the way, from the syllabus because we lost one day to ICE. I don't remember which week it was now, the week before last, I believe. So we did modify this a little bit. Did we lose? I don't remember. But this is modified slightly from the syllabus. So one of the questions that I got, so I got a couple of questions ahead of time. So one of the questions was how to determine molecularity in elementary step reactions? And so apologies for me tripping over this term. Like, what is this? But essentially, what we're really looking at oftentimes with these is we have a tendency to look at the reactants. And we'll go ahead and say that if you only have a single molecule reacting, then we would call this a unimolecular reaction. And all that means is that there's only one thing. So oftentimes you see this in some sort of decomposition where one molecule is spontaneously changing. You would actually also see this if it was a nuclear reaction. So one atom in that case spontaneously changing to another kind of atom. So those are different ways you may see that one. So then again, looking at the reactants for the next example. This says 2A. So essentially you have one molecule of A, a second molecule of A, and they're ramming into each other. And as they ram into each other, something changes. We just call that one biomolecular. 42. And this last one starts to get into the reason why we usually care about these. Now suddenly there's three reactants. So this one usually goes something like term molecular. And what's odd about this is this is the one where we usually assume that this is not likely to be an elementary reaction. And we say that because whenever we're talking about elementary reactions, we're talking about individual steps that could be part of a mechanism. And whenever you're trying to talk about three different molecules, three different atoms, three different things, all coming together at the same time without an enzyme to actually all hold them together. We're just in general chemistry. So we're just assuming these are going to randomly bump into each other. The statistical probability of all three of those coming together at the same time is very low. So when we're talking about elementary reactions, the assumption is, is that in order for it to be an elementary reaction, you're going to have either one reactant or two reactants in every elementary reaction. Because by the time you get to three, that's just not statistically likely to all come together all at the same time. So likely that's just not going to happen. But you can still name it. You can still call it something. So we can definitely still say what that's called. But again, it's not likely to be an elementary reaction. Early on, so I got different requests to talk about a couple of different problems. So I'm actually going to skip those for right now and take a look instead at some more examples dealing with kinetics. So the mechanism for a reaction and its reaction coordinate diagram are shown. What is the rate law for the overall reaction? So I went ahead and wrote that out by hand. But basically here are our steps. So this should be step one. This should be step two. And the coordinate diagram is this blue lily line thing on the right. Apologies, my partner is being really loud in his office next to mine. So I don't think the AirPods are picking that up, which is good. But I can hear it. So first of all, the question is, what's the rate law for the overall reaction? Well, right now, we don't actually have an overall reaction. So we'll go ahead and write the overall reaction, just so we know what we're looking at. So the overall reaction is going to be adding both of these together. So here what I have is it told me that this is a mechanism. So it didn't actually tell me that these were elementary steps, but it said that this was the mechanism. So since I know this is the mechanism, I can actually assume that these are elementary steps. I get to assume that because it told me that this was the mechanism. So I did have some information to guide me along, to know what these might possibly be. From here, we're going to go ahead and solve for the overall reaction. I know it didn't exactly ask me for that, but I'd like to just go ahead and write that out. My actual overall reaction, I'm going to, my Cs will effectively cancel. I won't see those anymore. I'm going to have A plus B plus D. Oh, my Bs will also cancel. Look at that. So since B's on both sides, I'm not going to write it down. So I'll have A plus D goes to E. And this will be my overall reaction. Now, if I want to write the rate law for the overall reaction, for my rate law, I need to go to my elementary steps because I can write a rate law for my elementary steps. So I can actually write a rate law for both of these. So the rate law for just step one by itself would just be the rate is equal to K times A times B for step one. And for step two, again, we're just practicing, is equal to C times D. So I'm giving you a lot more information than we really need. Now, the tricky part here is I want, I don't really want all of this information. The only thing the question really asked me for was the mechanism, was the rate law for the overall reaction. The piece of information that we haven't called out is which one is the slow step? So the slow step will determine the rate law. We often refer the slow step as the rate determining step. Another name for that, rate determining step. So the slow step or the rate determining step will determine the rate law. That's where I'm actually going to use the reaction coordinate diagram. And I'm probably going to move it because sometimes I just get excited and then I have a whole bunch of stuff everywhere and I need to draw on this too. So just going to kind of pick this up and move it so that we can talk about it. So this is my reaction coordinate diagram. So even though none of my axes are labeled, this being told it's a reaction coordinate diagram is enough information. So I'm going to go ahead and draw more stuff on it, but I actually have enough information just being told that it's a reaction coordinate diagram. All reaction coordinate diagrams have the same or very similar axes. Your x-axis is just reaction progress. And your y-axis is one of two things, but they're related. So sometimes your y-axis will say energy. Sometimes your y-axis will say N full P. But it is trying to tell you about the overall energy of the reaction. Now, if I'm looking for the slow step, what I'm really looking for is I'm looking for the highest activation energy. And I can find that on this graph by starting from, here's my reactants at the very beginning. I'm going to start from my reactants and go to the top of the first hill. So this is my activation energy for the first step. For step one. And then I can go ahead and look from wherever I begin to the top of the hill. And this is the activation energy for my second step. And what we should be able to see, draw that line back. What we should be able to see is my activation energy for the first step is bigger than the activation energy for the second step. So I'm looking for the differences in those peaks. So I'm looking for wherever it begins to the top of the peak. So my activation energy for step one is much larger than for step two. So from this information, I can actually say that step one is a slow step. So it took the reaction coordinate diagram to tell me that, but I can get that information from the reaction coordinate diagram. So step one is a slow step. I know that because of my activation energy. Then the beautiful thing is, is that for my first step, I can then actually just use the rate law of my first step as the rate law for the overall reaction because it's the rate determining step. So I am actually just going to use the rate law for step one. So I can actually solve the problem, which I know it's been a while since we started this problem. But we just wanted to know the rate law for the overall reaction. Once we know what the slow step is, we can determine the rate law based on the reaction coordinate diagram. We determined that step one is the slow step. And we can then take a look at the elementary reaction for the slow step, which in this case is step one, and just have our rate law from that, which all we're doing is using the coefficients of the reactants, which we get to use because they're elementary reactions, and write our rate law from there. So that's a lot of concepts rolled together, no math, but a lot of conceptual information to kind of guide through what we're allowed to do, what assumptions we get to make, and how we arrive at that particular spot. Questions on that example?
I don't think we have any questions. I think we're good.
Have some more examples. Because one of the other things that I got asked about was things like, how do you know and identify different parts of your reaction? So I'm actually still going to use this same reaction. I am going to go ahead and rewrite this only because I've already started to scribble on it. But I'm going to use this exact same information that we had before. So I'm still going to use my A plus B is going to C. And C plus D is going to B plus E, I believe. Yes, beautiful. So we already had step one and step two. And we also already saw that when I added these together, some things canceled out so that my overall reaction is A plus D goes to E. So some of the things that we can already go ahead and say is I can go ahead and say from my overall reaction, I can go ahead and name my reactants. And I can go ahead and name, I only have one of them in this case, my product. I know that we've talked about reactants and products for a long time, but realize that when you're going to have a lot of different names, it's nice to fall back on the things we've done before. And we still have reactants and products, but you know that that's what they are because they're in the overall reaction. And that's what they are in the overall reaction. Now, there's two other species that we actually got rid of. So one of them is B. And the other one is C. And I have both of these in here because these are the things that people usually have the most trouble with. And I have them both. So one of them is something that shows up at the beginning. So wherever your step one elementary reactants are, this is the very beginning of the reaction. This is the very, very beginning. So this is, this is the very beginning. So I have something, B, that is there in the beginning. And it shows up at the end. B and E, these are my products. So it shows up at the end. So B is a species that is present at the very beginning, and it's also miraculously reappears at the very end, exactly as it was before. This is a catalyst. So B is a catalyst. It's there in the beginning, it's there in the end. And the other thing about B, B should have been in our overall rate law because a catalyst will definitely affect how quickly the reaction takes place. That's one of the things about a catalyst is it has that ability to drastically change the activation energy. And therefore, it has the ability to drastically change the rate of a reaction. So the amount of catalyst does matter. So scrolling back to the problem that we've already done, you might notice that B was in our rate law. It's not a reactant, it's not a product, it's a catalyst. And so B was in the rate law, just like it should be, even though it's not in the overall reaction. That is one of the other hallmarks of a catalyst. Something that's in the overall rate law because it matters to how fast the reaction's going to go. But you don't actually see it in the overall reaction because it's there in the beginning and it's there in the end. And so overall, it doesn't show up because it's not used up and it's not produced. So in something that always seems to be similar, but it's not, there's something that shows up relatively halfway through and then is used up. So C is something that it appears, not in the beginning, but it appears as a product. So it was formed. So it was, it had to be formed. It was not there in the beginning. We did not, we never added this to the reaction. It's something that we got. It appeared. And then not only does it appear, was it formed, but in addition, it gets used up again. So this idea that something's going to appear and then get used up, this is going to be an intermediate. So C is an intermediate. And that is, that's because something that it shows up, it appears, and then it winds up going away because it is utilized in our reaction. This is something that actually we could label on our reaction coordinate diagram. It would actually go here, in the well in between. So we could actually label C, the intermediate in our reaction coordinate diagram. Because that, basically, that space in between the two steps is where you would have your intermediate. It's short-lived, it's probably not very stable, might be, which is why it comes out in the stability well. But so that's, that's our intermediate. So I've got a few more examples just to kind of show what, what things that we might be able to have. So looking at a different set of reactions, still step one, should have labeled these. Step one and step two. We're told that our first step is our slow step. So in this case, we could go ahead and write a rate law for the overall reaction. Overall reaction rate law. We're told, we're not given a reaction coordinate diagram. We're just told, hey, the first step is a slow step. So the rate would be equal to K times G squared. Because again, I get to use the rate law of my elementary step, of the first step as my rate law for my overall reaction. And I could also go ahead and identify H. So I have H. It's not there in the beginning, but it shows up. So it's formed and then it's used. So because of that, H is an intermediate. And again, we could go ahead and add these reactions together. So my overall reaction would actually be 2G goes to J is my overall reaction. So I could go ahead and still label G as a reactant. And I could label J as my product. So I can still go ahead and go through and label every single piece out of here. Got one more example. So in here, there's a lot of things going on. So I'm again told that my first step is my slow step. So I could go ahead and write the rate law for the overall reaction. My overall rate law as being the rate is equal to K, it's a lowercase k, notice, of X times Y. Because I'm just told that that's my slow step. And then in identifying everything, I do actually want to know what I get to keep and what I don't get to keep. So I'm going to start to notice that I have Y here and Y here. And I have Z here and I have Z here. So I do have two different things that cancel out. So adding everything together, I just have 2X goes to C plus B. So I can go ahead and label my reactants and my products. And then Y is something that's there in the very beginning. They're in that very, very first step. And appears at the end. So Y, and it's in the overall rate law, even though it's not a reactant. So Y is a catalyst. So Z is then going to be the intermediate. It's something that's produced in that first step and then is used in the second step. So the main thing when it comes to identifying your catalysts and your intermediates really is going to be taking a deep breath and just take, take the moment to just identify everything, but paying attention to which one's the first step, which one's the second step. Because catalysts and intermediates are both things that won't be in the overall reaction. So sometimes for that reason, they get a little bit confusing. But when you remember the story of what an intermediate is supposed to be, an intermediate is something that's short-lived, it's produced in the first step, it's used in the second step. So it's something that's made by the reaction and then consumed by the reaction. Where it falls should start to make sense. So its chemical story should follow where you see it in the two parts of the mechanism. Questions so far?
I think we are good. No questions, we don't have any so far.
So there was a couple. Okay.
We've got one question.
Okay.
How would you write the rate law of reaction if the rate determining step has an intermediate?
All right. So someone gave me some homework problems. And that's what I've got. So this is homework problem 14.64. So the rate law for the decomposition of ozone to molecular oxygen, and so here's our chemical reaction, is the rate is equal to K with ozone squared on the top divided by molecular oxygen on the bottom. And then it gives me a mechanism. So then the grand question is, how on earth did we get the rate law from that? So there's a couple of different clues in here. So here's my O3 between, here's my first step and here is my second step. Now, one of the things that we don't cover, but your book does, and therefore shows up a little bit in Alex, is the fact that this notation, where the first step is written with equilibrium arrows, but the second step is not. This is their way of telling you that the first step is fast and the second step is slow. We won't use this on an exam, but that's what this is. So writing then the rate law, we would write the rate law from the second step since the slow step is the rate determining step. So that's where the rate is equal to my atomic oxygen times my ozone, oh, times my rate constant. But as the question pointed out, or as the student pointed out, this molecular oxygen is actually an intermediate. It's something that is created in the first step and then it's consumed in the second step. Our rate laws cannot have intermediates in them because we can't measure their concentrations. They are so short-lived, they are so temporary and unstable that that's really just not useful information to tell us anything about the rate law. It may be accurate, it may be true, but we'll never be able to measure it in real life. So what we're going to do, and this was part of one of your Alex assignments, is essentially we need information about atomic oxygen. So what we're going to do is we are going to write both rate laws for the first step, assuming that this reaction's going forward and assuming that the reaction's going backwards. Because rate laws are always written with the reactants and only with the reactants. So I can write a rate law for the forward reaction, which is just the rate is equal to K1 times ozone. And I can actually write a rate law for the reverse reaction. A negative 1 times my molecular oxygen times my intermediate. And since this is equilibrium and since this is the fast step, those two rates are the same. So I can set them equal to each other. So I can go ahead and say that my K1 of my ozone is equal to K negative 1 of my atomic oxygen times my molecular oxygen. We're doing all of this, by the way, so that we can get rid of the atomic oxygen over here. So what we're going to do So what we're going to do is we're going to solve all of this for the atomic oxygen. We're just going to do some algebra. So all I'm going to do is I'm going to try to hold on to that atomic oxygen and I'm going to move. I already had K1 and I had ozone over here and I'm just going to divide that. By K negative one and my molecular oxygen. So all of this, my ozone divided by my molecular oxygen is equal to the concentration of my intermediate. I would like to get rid of that intermediate. So I'm going to take all of this stuff. And I'm going to plug it in. Over here. Because I already said that I knew that the rate was equal to K times my atomic oxygen times ozone. But I don't want that one species in there, but I can replace that one species. So the rate isn't equal to. And technically we could say it's K2 times K1 divided by K negative one. But all we're really going to do is we're going to take the stuff in red. Because that's replacing the atomic oxygen and multiply it by what was already there. Which is ozone. We're going to go ahead and simplify this just to collect like terms together. So all we're going to do is have the rate is equal to K because. All of those little rate constant Ks collapse into a rate constant. Times ozone squared divided by molecular oxygen. Which is actually what the book told us was going to be our rate law overall. Now. Now that we did all that. We will not test you on this. Because it's a bunch of algebra. And we have better things to ask you. Now, that being said. It's useful to know things like the fast step and the slow step, we'll test you on that. I did a couple of different reactions that had the first step was slow. And getting the overall reaction and the rate law when the first step is slow, that's valid, we can ask you that. This, when the first step is fast, is the one specific thing that we don't test on. And frankly, it's really just because. Y'all can't handle it, but for the amount of time it usually takes for us to teach it. And you to master it, we would much rather y'all spend the time on concepts and spend the time on something else. Because honestly, we're, we'll be testing you on algebra with those ice tables. And so we'd rather y'all spend your algebra practice on the ice tables instead of your algebra time on this. But I figured I would go ahead and answer the question because I got asked this question both. A couple of minutes ago in the chat and I also got asked to do a specific example out of the textbook. So since, since Inquiring Minds wanted to know, I went ahead and did it, but. We won't actually test you on this exact thing.
We have more questions. For the rate law for step one. Why is it not concentration of B upon concentration of YX? And how would you identify a catalyst in reaction mechanism of more than two steps?
So. I'm frightened a little bit as I'm trying to think through. Which. This is always the difficult part with doing things via the internet. Where I'm, I'm hoping that this is the one that the chat was asking about. I tried to use different variables. So it would be easier for me to go through. So the question, I believe, the first question was. Why, why can we get an overall rate law? Which is just the concentration of X times the concentration of Y and there's nothing else in here. So anytime that we're writing rate laws from elementary steps. So two things, one, it is the overall rate law. But if you'll remember. Even though we can have the overall rate law, the overall reaction, pardon me. Try it again. So even though we have the overall reaction down here at the bottom, this 2X goes to C plus B. This overall reaction is not an elementary step. So if we were going to write a rate law. From this reaction, we would need data. We would need information. So that was back on stuff that we tested y'all on back on exam one. The various reasons why we can't write a rate law from an overall reaction or just use those coefficients. But we can write rate laws for elementary steps. So that's what this rate law is. So this rate law is the rate law of the first step. It's also because the question told me it's the rate law of the slow step. When you have the first step being slow. You can then go ahead and say that the rate law. Of the slow step, the rate law of the first step is the rate law of the overall reaction. You get to do that because the assumption is then that the second step is so fast. That it just doesn't matter. So trying to do an analogy. I don't know if y'all have ever, so the one I use in class, I'll use the one again. I don't know if you have that group of friends where. There's could be like three or six of you and you, you know that one person, it takes them forever to get ready. I don't know if that's because they always lose their shoes or because they, they're not wearing their socks and then they gotta go like back to their room to go get new socks. They're digging through stuff, I don't know what happens, or they've misplaced their keys, it's, it's just them. You still love them, they're still a wonderful person, but they are the slow step. We therefore, as far as timing goes. Everybody else usually just don't remember like how fast they can get out the door. You remember the slow person because they're the name that you're calling from the hallway to see if they're ready yet. So that you can get in the car to leave and go somewhere. So in that same way, the overall reaction, you can just give the rate law for the slow step. And the whole reason why I did go ahead and do the other example of the slow step being the second one. Which we will not do on exams, but this works very, in a very straightforward way when it's the first step. Hoping that answered the first question. Then. I was asked a question that involves what happens if you have more than one step. So what I'm going to do. Is wait to see if he'll ask me new questions, but for just a minute. I've got to think through what this is going to look like. Oh, no, 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 no equilibrium arrows, no, no. Soon, but not right now. So here now are three steps. Your catalyst. So I have, so we'll, from what we've been doing before, add them all together. What is going on here? So here I've got a D and I have a D, so those will cancel. Here I have a C and I have a C, those will cancel. Here I have a B and I have a B, those will cancel, E, F, G, okay. So the only things I wind up with, A plus E plus F. Goes to G. That's my overall reaction. Now. Both D and B are things that are made partway through. So both D and B will be intermediates. C is my catalyst. In this case, I actually had the catalyst being reformed after the second step. But the point is, is that it's still there in the beginning and it comes out of the reaction completely reformed at some other point. Now, yes, this C being reformed could have been in the last step. That would have been fine. But again, the whole point of a catalyst is, is that it needs to be there in the beginning. So. So I went ahead and put it in the beginning of the first step and then just to show you something different, I had it come out of the second step. The point is, is that the first time, so whenever you're looking at these as steps, realize that you should be able to follow these chronologically. So, because essentially what is happening in any set of elementary steps. Is, oh, wrong way. So what's happening in any set of elementary steps is that essentially whatever's here in the very beginning. So step one reactants is the very beginning. So A plus C is my very beginning. Then stuff happens and D appears. And then E gets added in. It was probably hanging out in the solution the whole time, but until D appears, E had nothing to do. So as we look at step two, E only got to play, E only got to interact in the chemistry because D appeared. So E reacts with D, which is an intermediate. But E couldn't react with A. E couldn't react with C, it was just hanging out in solution, waiting to be called upon. It sees D, gets super excited, something happens. Once these things react. Then there comes my C again. So C basically is going to come out of the reaction because it could then wind up going back. And reacting with even more A, it's a catalyst, that's part of what it does, it just gets to be reused over and over and over again. Then I have B and B is going to interact with F. So somewhat similar to when we had E just hanging out, waiting for something to do. Now F was just waiting, hanging out in solution, bored. F sees B and is like, finally, I get to do something, it's so exciting. And F and B can go ahead then and make G. So challenge yourself to think through the mechanism as a chemical story. Whenever we talk about reactions, these are supposed to be the story of what's reacting together. The story of what's coming together and what products are being formed. It, it is something where you can talk about this as being something where it's got a beginning and it has an end. Just turns out when we do mechanisms, we also get a lot of middle stuff too, which can be a lot of fun. But more challenging, we usually don't do all this middle stuff. So take, take some time to challenge yourself to look at mechanisms as being that bit of a chemical story. I know we get oftentimes more bogged down in the analysis of what's going on, but we label them step one, step two and step three because they're actually sequential. You actually have one thing happening and then the next thing happening and then the next thing happening. They do actually, they go in order. That's part of how all of this works. And it'll, it'll help, I think, conceptually to consider what's really going on when you think through it like that. Other questions so far?
We also have one more question, more request, asking if you could go back to the algebra on the ICE tables?
Sure, so that is, so if we're good on reaction mechanisms, then I can, I can do other things. So that's always one of the hardest parts is. Yes, I definitely have other things planned, yeah.
There is one more clarification being asked if elementary reactions rate laws do not include products. Is that correct? Is that why concentration of B is not in the rate law for the slow step?
Oh, yes. So I apologize that when we talked back through all of this, correct. Products do not go in rate laws. On, for the kinds of things we are going to give you. I know that that sounds esoteric and it sounds strange, but essentially. There are examples where products are included, those examples belong with the examples when the first step is fast. So when the first step is fast and the second step is slow, you then sometimes wind up with rate laws where. Products or other things are in the rate law. But as I mentioned, we're only going to ask y'all to write overall reaction. Rate laws, overall reaction rate laws from elementary steps. When the first step is slow. So that y'all don't have to worry about the intermediates. So yes, it's not included because it's a product, yes. There's a couple of things quickly that came in ahead of time. Which is our rate law of reaction, rate law of overall reaction and rate law of mechanism, all the same thing. Technically, rate law of reaction is more vague. Just for the record, because technically when we were talking about rate law of a reaction, that could be an elementary step. It could be the first step, it could be the second step, it could be the third step, who knows? So rate law of reaction is more vague. Rate law of overall reaction then is simply more specific. And honestly, rate law of the, of mechanism, this is not my favorite language. But. If it's asking for the rate law of the mechanism, they're probably trying to talk about the rate law of the overall reaction, just in a weird way. So not, not my favorite language, but, but doable. So those, those three things are very closely related and you may very well hear all of those to reference the same thing. But just keep in mind that the rate law of the reaction is more vague than the other ones. I've already addressed adding catalysts to the overall balanced reaction, that was a no. Do they go in the rate law of the overall, they go in the rate law of the overall reaction, yes. And we looked at some examples of that, so this was an excellent question, which I basically tried to answer through some examples. I did 64 from the homework. 96, I'll show y'all 96, but I'm actually not going to talk about it and I'll tell you why. So 96 is talking about a particular reaction with zinc and two mol or hydrochloric acid. This is a really lovely question, this would have been in a kind of question that we would have asked you guys about for exam one. So there was information that we talked about when we talked about what could control the speed of a reaction. So that's, that's where this one ties into and things that would affect kinetics. So it has information, I'll go ahead and talk through the first one. So granulated zinc versus powdered zinc. This is the difference, I don't know if y'all have ever seen it, the difference between. What in the United States we usually talk about as just being regular sugar. But technically, normal quote unquote sugar is actually granulated sugar, it's actually tiny little cubes of sugar. And then we also have this stuff called powdered sugar. If you watch the Great British Baking Show like I do, that is also called caster sugar. But it's basically little teeny tiny bits. So some of this is the language of the difference between what granulated means and powdered means, powder just has a higher surface area. It dissolves a lot faster. It's part of the reason why when you make like icing, you usually make, or some is called icing sugar, maybe catcher's the other one. I'm not from the UK, so I don't know, but powdered sugar dissolves a lot faster because of the higher surface area. Granulated sugar doesn't dissolve as quickly because of larger service area. But yeah, but this 96 would have been an exam one kind of question. So I'm actually going to skip over this one for now. Okay, most everything else has to do with ice tables. Which is the other thing I have. And I do apologize, I didn't write in my equilibrium arrows, I was trying to get my little. I have a little picture file of my equilibrium arrows and I was fighting with one note, it kept, it doesn't matter. I was fighting with one note, so I have to hand draw in my equilibrium arrows. So here's a reaction. Three hydrogen plus one nitrogen gas go to two moles of ammonia gas. Initially, one atmosphere of both hydrogen ox- hydrogen and nitrogen gases replaced in a steel cylinder. If my value of K. Uh, if my value of K uh, is one point five times to the negative twenty-two for the above reaction, what is the equilibrium pressure of ammonia? So. I'm just gonna start to do this problem. So first of all, there's a lot of stuff happening. Um, you'll see me fail to rewrite my state symbols, mostly because they're all the same, they're all gases. So all of them play. I don't have any water, I don't have any, so no pure liquids, I don't have any pure solids, so everything stays here. But initially I'd have, so this is my R I C H. So initially, one atmosphere of hydrogen and nitrogen are placed in steel cylinder. It doesn't tell me anything about the product, so I get to assume that zero. This is something we are going to do a lot, which is back engine Kim one, hey, even at the beginning of this semester. There are plenty of times where we were like, we start off with the reactants and you would have naturally assumed that there were no products. Well, you get to make the same assumption now because oftentimes there will be things where we just assume there are no products in the beginning unless we're told otherwise. So I want the equilibrium pressure of ammonia, this is the goal down here. And I know information about K. Before I fill in my change row, I want to consider which way my reaction will be going. When I look at that, what I'm really going to pay attention to is this zero here. Um, so we can go ahead and write a reaction quotient if we'd like, which would be that partial pressure of ammonia squared divided by the pressure of hydrogen cubed divided by the pressure of nitrogen by itself. But what you might notice is is that since I have a zero, this is zero divided by one cubed by by one, which is, it's just zero. So uh, my value of K is a very small number, but it's bigger than zero because it's a positive number. So my K value is going to be greater than Q, so I would expect this reaction to shift to the right. Um, by the way, we also could have done that conceptually because essentially we know that an equilibrium, I cannot have a negative pressure. I can't owe the reaction ammonia gas, so this has to be positive. I have to have positive everything. Um, so because I start off at zero, I have to add here. I don't have any other options. Um, so that way I can subtract here and I can subtract here. One minus X, one minus X. So I filled out my table, I calculated Q just to double check. And we're well on our way. Now. So the goal is figure out the equilibrium pressure. So I can go ahead and set all this up as related to K. It's going to be the same expression as my Q expression. So this then is my K value. Uh, one point five times ten to the negative twenty-two. Yep. For the above reaction is equal to two X all squared divided by one minus X for hydrogen that's cubed and one minus X. Now, the grand question is, what are we going to do? There is a fairly large hint in this particular problem because, uh, there's this, uh, it's cubed here and I would actually be multiplying this times something else. Uh, so this would actually wind up, I'd have an X to the fourth power if I actually wrote this all out. And we love algebra, don't get me wrong, but, um, I, I still am using this calculator, the TI thirty X two S solar technically. Um, this no, X solving X to the fourth polomo- polynomials uh, on this thing? No, um, just, uh, no, not, not on your exam, no. Um, so I really am going to hope that I can use some sort of approximation. So based on that, I'm, I'm going to look for an approximation. Now, you're going to wind up before your exam with two different options for this approximation. But for this one, what I want to also consider is if I'm thinking about using the X as small approximation. Part of what this conceptually is based on is is that X has to be small in the direction I'm going. Do I expect the change to be small? We already decided we knew which way the reaction is going. The reaction is going to go towards products. It's going to go to fill in that zero. So we already made the decision about which way we're going. When we look at K, what we can see is K is a very small number, that ten to the negative twenty-two. When we have a small value of K, that small value of K tells me that my reactants are favored. At equilibrium, I expect to see a whole bunch of reactants. And I get that from the value of K. So as far as the X is small approximation goes, as I'm looking at this, I know we're going to go to products, but we don't expect to see a lot of products at equilibrium because of my small value of K. So K is actually small in the direction we're going. We don't really expect to have a whole lot of products in the end. We expect more than zero. But we don't expect a whole lot of products. Um, so that X is small approximation should actually work for us, or at least it sounds good. Uh, we'll go ahead and do the math and we'll double check it too. Um, but that's how we make that decision. Uh, because what we're really counting on is is that anywhere where we might add or subtract X, we're going to assume that that change is so small, it doesn't matter. Because we're essentially assuming that X is zero, that this change is so teeny tiny that we just don't even care about it. Um, so usually the analogy I use for this is dealing with money. So if you have someone who's a millionaire and then you take away like a penny, uh, one cent from the millionaire, you would still say that they have a million dollars. We just don't really even care about that penny in that particular case. Um, or if you added a penny to the value of a millionaire, you would still say that they have a million dollars. Technically, they've got a million dollars and one cent. But it's such a small change, we just don't really even care about it. So this then is four X squared divided by one cubed times one, which is just four X squared. Uh, do note by the way, that two X all squared is four X squared. This is the number one most missed things on exams. People ask me that all the time. What's the number one most missed things on exams? It's making sure that when you square things, that two X squared, it is not, it's two X all squared. That's why I wrote those parentheses around it. That exponent applies to the coefficient, it applies to the two and it applies to the X. You square all of it. Don't forget, square the, square the number two. Um, so now I can go ahead and solve for X, uh, so I'm going to divide by four and then take the square root. Um, so I'm just going to divide by four and then take the square root of all of that. Uh, I get X to be equal to six point one, two, three, seven times ten to the negative twelve. And it's looking really good for being small, but we are still going to double check. So the grand question is, how would we double check? Because we assumed that X is small. And I mean, it looks small, but how small is small is always a valid question. So what we're going to do is we're going to take that number and we're going to investigate how small is small. So I'm going to take my change and we divide it by my initial and I'm going to multiply that by a hundred percent. And as long as that is less than five percent, we're going to call this a valid approximation. What we're really doing is we're double checking to see if the change is less than five percent of the initial. Did my change overall, is my change overall less than five percent of the initial? So in order to do this, I can take, oh, this should have been three X. So I lucked out since we use the X as small approximation. I did this beforehand, it says three X in my notes. Um, which I realize is not, so I should have dropped all of my coefficients. I should have done it a little bit slower. I got excited about Q. So I should have dropped all of my coefficients down, so this should have been one minus three times zero. It's still, again, all the, all of the calculations are still identical. Um, oh, that's what happened. Somewhere in my notes, I just, I flipped something, so I didn't see it. Um, so the goal is to look at the change versus the initial. To make our lives easier, I am just going to use the one for the nitrogen. We could use the one for the hydrogen. It should not matter. Um, so using my change row from my nitrogen, this is uh, the change I got, which is my X value times the negative twelve divided by my initial, which is one times a hundred percent is still a very small number, six point one, two times ten to the negative tenth. Uh, we want that to be less than five. Uh, for those of you who don't like exponential notation, this is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Which that number is definitely less than five. Um, so that's how I know my approximation is valid. Um, yes, for those of you that are good at scientific notation, uh, that you could have figured out that since it's ten to the negative twelfth, you may not have necessarily needed to multiply it times a hundred percent, especially since our initial concentrations were one. But again, this is showing you the process, so if you have something that's more on the border, you know how to do it. I didn't actually answer the question. Crap. So. What was I looking for? What is the equilibrium pressure of ammonia? Okay, I even boxed it. Um, what is the equilibrium pressure of ammonia? Uh, that is two times X, not X. So I need to go ahead and take my value of X and multiply it by two to get the equilibrium pressure of ammonia. That would be a concentration thing. So my pressure of ammonia is going to be two X, which I know from my ice table. So I can take two times that value and get with my three significant figures, one point two two times ten to the negative eleven. Yeah, don't forget to plug things back into your ice table. Uh, for those of y'all that have been working with Alex, uh, this is the reason why Alex will do not always nice whole coefficients is because Alex will redo the change row to make the math look pretty. Um, it makes sense to Alex because Alex loves algebra. Uh, I do have additional examples, but questions so far.
This is one question about why don't we have to worry about limiting reactants in this type of problem?
So for this kind of problem, technically, if we wanted, we actually could go back and look at limiting reactant. Limiting reactant is really just asking either which one do we run out of first or it asks, how much do we have left over? This equilibrium row down here is the stuff we have at the end. So this row here is, tells us what we should expect that we have at the end. Um, and one of the things though with limiting reactant is limiting reactant assumed that something was zero. So when we did limiting reactant, and we actually will look at it again this semester, but it's later. Um, one of the assumptions limiting reactant makes is that something is zero. When we do equilibrium, the assumption is that nothing is zero, absolutely nothing. Now, it could be a really small number. I don't know if y'all noticed, one point two two times ten to the negative eleventh? That's next to nothing. Um, it is not a lot. Um, we did not make a lot of ammonia. We did not. Uh, but we made some. That's one of the hallmarks of equilibrium. Equilibrium is going to assume that there is at least some of whatever is there. There should be some products, there should be some reactants, there should be at least a little bit. Um, there will, as always in chemistry, be a couple of exceptions to that. Uh, your main exceptions, by the way, will be strong acids and strong bases. Uh, so strong acids and strong bases will be the time where you still do not see equilibrium arrows written with them. And we will still draw those with regular arrows that just show things going from the reactants to the products and that's it. Um, but otherwise, when you see the equilibrium arrow, the assumption you get to make is that you always have at least some of everything at the very end. Uh, even if it's a ridiculously small number. So that's, that's part of why we're ignoring limiting reactant for right now, is limiting reactant has the opposite assumption. Limiting reactant assumes that something is zero. Other questions so far?
Wants to know, where did initial one come from?
The question. I apologize. That's always one of the hard things when I get going is is that I only have so much space. And um, so the, the one atmosphere came from the problem. That was given.
Uh, and just a few general questions about until which video in the pre-recorded do we watch for chapter seventeen? And, uh, also wanted to know if all videos, like if everybody has to watch all the videos in chapter sixteen?
Okay. Um, so. Chapter sixteen. See these numbers at the very end, says thirty, well, maybe if I can make this a little bit bigger just for kicks and giggles. I'm going to be so confused as to why my my uh, stuff is bigger. Anyway, uh, so there are numbers at the very end. So this is thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven. Sixty-five. So for chapter sixteen, we numbered the videos in order that you need them. Do not watch sixty-five right now. It's later. So in chapter sixteen, do pay attention to the video numbers. They are there to help you. You do need all of the videos in the thirties, which starts with video number thirty-one and goes to thirty-seven in chapter sixteen. So keep an eye on the numbers. This one is labeled as clearly as we can make it, including having the number sixty-five to show you that it's not for this exam. Then for by the way, if y'all, I understand if you haven't messed around in Microsoft Streams. Just for the record, I get it. Um, but y'all do actually have access to a fair amount of things in chapter sixteen. Okay, good. This is this semester. Yay. Um, channels. And under channels, everything's done by chapter and the question was about seventeen. Okay. Uh, part one, an ass, an introduction. Part two, which is video thirty-nine, part three, which is video forty, KW, yes, strong acids, strong bases, yes. Uh, two, forty-four. Uh, so the, the video you need to go to in chapter seventeen is part seven with successive approximations and number forty-four. We do reserve the right to ask you about successive approximations on this exam. Yes, we do. Successive approximations. Um, so polyprotic acids, that is the next section, the first section that we'll do on exam three. So hopefully that answers that one.
Uh, I think that's all the questions we had so far.
Okay. What else did I have? So. Let's do another ice table. Oh, these are all supposed to be gases. I was supposed to go back and put in that these are all gases. Um, so one atmosphere of all three gases, I could tell I was a little lazy in making these initial concentrations, uh, aren't a steel cylinder. If a value of K equals 8.5 times to the negative ninth, what is the equilibrium concentration of HI? So we're going to do the same thing. We're going to start off, go ahead and add these. Plus I as a gas goes to HI also as a gas. That's my reaction. Initial change equilibrium. And initially, I have one atmosphere of everything. Oh dear. I really want to fill in my change row. And for the last example, we just went with the zero. But we also did something where we solve for Q. So this time, we, we actually have to solve for Q because we have numbers everywhere. So the grand question is, which way is this reaction going? And I can't tell because I've just got a bunch of stuff. So we can go ahead and take our value of Q. So this is going to be the pressure of HI squared divided by the pressure of hydrogen divided by the pressure of iodine. Everything is one. So Q is equal to one. My K value is a really small number. That 8.5 times to the negative ninth. So my K value is actually going to be less than Q. My K value favors reactants. My Q value tells me I've got a really similar amount of everything. So I should actually then be heading back towards my reactants because K is less than Q. So then as I start to come over, I'm going to make sure I use all of my coefficients. I should therefore be heading towards my reactants. One hydrogen, one X, one iodine, one X. Two hydrogen iodides, two X. And this is one plus X, one plus X, one minus 2X. Okay. So we're going to go ahead and do the same game. What's the equilibrium concentration? I'm going to go ahead and set this equal to my value of K. And put everything together. So my products go on the top. And they are going to be all squared. One minus 2X, all squared, divided by one plus X, divided and one plus X. So the grand question is, are we allowed to use the approximation? Are we allowed to say that X is small? And this is the weird part because K looks pretty small, negative nine, that looks small. But this is the part where you have to remember to use the X as small approximation. To use X as small approximation. K has to be small in the direction we're going. In the direction we're going. The reaction is going. K says that we have 10 to the negative ninth. K is reactant favored. K tells me I should have a lot of reactants at the end. And that's also the direction my reaction is going. So this actually tells me that X should not be small. X should be pretty big. Because I should actually wind up with a lot of reactants because of what K is. So essentially, I'm expecting from my initial values, there to be a drastic change from my initial to my equilibrium value. So I cannot use the X as small approximation. Odds are good it will not work. So I cannot use X as small. I have absolutely no, basically based on everything that we know, it's probably not going to work. So what I can go ahead and do is consider other methods. So one of the questions that someone asked, which was a really valid question, is are we going to have to use the quadratic formula? Are we gonna, are you going to force us to use the quadratic? And here's the weird thing. You don't have to use the quadratic to solve this question. You do not. But I guarantee you that some people will not notice that this is a perfect square. So as far as do you need to be able to use the quadratic for the exam, I'm going to say yes. Only because I know that some people will see this, but in the stress of the exam, they might not notice that they could actually use the perfect square method for this. And if you don't notice that you can use the perfect square, you need a way to solve this algebraically. And you could solve this with the quadratic equation. You can't. That being said, the perfect square is faster. So that's the one I'm going to use. So essentially, I get to use this because these two terms were identical. It's the reason why I get to do that. So essentially, I'm going to square root both sides. And when I do that, I get the square root of 8.5 times to the negative ninth. As I do this, I'm going to have, keep my three sig figs plus two additional digits. So anytime that you are doing these sorts of calculations, it's always three sig figs plus two additional digits. The other conversation I've been having with people is actually about their calculators. So I held up my, my scientific calculator earlier. This calculator will still store five numbers in it. For this particular model, there's a little STO button down here at the bottom. And STO stands for store. And I can store five values. So this yucky number, the square root of 8.5 times to the negative ninth. This is a number I would actually store in my calculator, and I would tell my calculator that this is like the letter A. And then every time I needed it, I would just use my calculator's memory to do that. So if you're unfamiliar with if your calculator can do that, feel free to ask. You could ask your instructors. You could also ask the internet. Because I have never used a TI Inspire before, so depending on what calculator you have, I do, I may not know how to use it. Also, I do not know how to use usually Casios, and there's some other really fancy versions of notations that I, I don't know how to use. So I'll help you as much as I can, but don't be surprised if you ask me on the fly and I consult the internet because. But in the meantime, plus 9.2195 times to the negative 5 times X equals 1 minus 2X. Now I get to gather like terms. So I'm just going to go and add 2X to both sides. This technically gets me 2.000. I worked this out ahead of time, by the way. Because subtract that number from both sides, I get 0.999. So this is the other reason why I would have that little talk about storing numbers in your calculator, because this, this would help you a lot. X is 0.49993. And while we don't necessarily need to do it, you can likely tell X is about 0.5. I know it's, we're holding in more digits than that, but X is about 0.5. And from our original problem, we started with constant, we started with pressures of one. So our change is about 50% of where we started. So that's a lot of change. That's not a small change. If, if you had your millionaire and you took away half of their money, they would notice. Take away half of anything and you, you tend to notice if you take away half. So this is not a small change. So the X is small approximation will not work. What was I supposed to do? The equilibrium concentration of HI. That's what I'm looking for. So I have to therefore solve using this thing. One minus 2X is my goal. So my pressure of HI is equal to 1 minus 2X. And yes, I did just plug that into my calculator and you get something that's really small, which is doing it how we might do it in my exam, 1.38 times 10 to the negative four atmospheres. So one of the things to keep in mind when we're talking about some of these different ice tables is this coming exam for exam two. This is the time where we test you specifically on when are you best able to use different algebra tricks? So when is the X is small the best option? When is the perfect square the best option? Et cetera. So this exam coming up is when we'll have a variety of different ways to solve things. It is when you do need to especially be careful about what initial concentrations we gave you. And definitely, if we have initial concentrations for everything, you should be checking that value of Q. Again, if something is zero, then you're set because you can't have any, anything negative. But if you have initial concentrations for everything, you, you do need to plug back in and double check Q. So the, the other reason why I'm saying this is because if you've talked to other students who've had this course before, once we get past this exam, we're going to use the X as small approximation a lot. Once, once we're done with this. So right now, you need to stay on your toes and keep watching. Because we will still use these ice tables or rice tables for the next exam. And I think even the exam after that, they'll still show up a little bit. But the nice thing is that this is the only exam where you have to kind of keep an eye out and be like, okay, what, what can I use? Is this a, X is small? Is X not small? What's, what's happening here? So you need to be wary of that for this upcoming exam. Questions so far?
Uh, yeah, there's one question about what is a successive approx?
So. A successive, so successive approximation is so we'll just, we'll just try it on this problem. So we made a whole bunch of reasons why approximation was not a good call for this. Now the thing is, is that there's, if, if you're really stuck, you might consider a successive approximation. And I'm going to remind you, actually, I'll tell you what. There's a video to walk you through exactly what a successive approximation is. It's here. It's part seven of chapter 17. I'm actually going to take the time to do the manipulations of K because that was somewhat, something that someone took the time to submit before this started. And since there is a video to walk you through exactly what a successive approximation is, all I would frankly be doing is duplicating that. If we have time at the end, I'm happy to do that. But since there is a video that I already showed you where it was, instead, what I wanted to do was take a look at a couple of different options for manipulations of K. So. And I see. I did not actually get these in before time. That's probably because I was fighting with my equilibrium props. So when it comes to things like manipulations of K, you might see something like this. Where you're given a particular reaction, and then you're given a second reaction and basically asked, so what's the value of K for this thing? So this is where there's a set of manipulations that we covered in class to consider. So for this particular one, this is reversing the reaction. And when we reverse the reaction, all we really need to do is put one over the original. It's going to be equal to my K2. So I can actually put one over the number 24 and get 0.0 supposed to be a zero. For, for my manipulation. So I have some options for what I can possibly do. And there was, there were three, four different manipulations that we covered. So this one is reversing the reaction. And all we do is take one over. But what if the problem looks something like this? So here I have 2G is an equilibrium with H. And I have 2H in equilibrium with 2J. K1 is equal to 50. K2 is equal to 1 times 10 to the negative 4. And what I want to know is if I had the reaction 2G is in equilibrium with J, what is this value of equilibrium? So now I have to do something a little bit more because essentially I have two different reactions. And my final reaction still has G in it, but then also has J. So I, so one of the things I'm going to have to do is add these two reactions together. But I can't add them exactly like they are. What I'm going to have to do is I'm going to have to worry about these coefficients. So what I first need to do is actually take all of this and this reaction is going to be essentially done in half. So my K value is going to be raised to that exponent. I think in class, most of what we did was look at multiplying things. And so we usually were multiplying things by like two. So we would have gone and made everything larger. So things were squared or things were cubed. This is looking at going in the opposite direction. I have coefficients that I don't want. So I'm dividing by two. Dividing by two is actually the same as multiplying by one half. Your textbook takes the time to, to show this separately. And it'll actually show this then as taking the square root of 1 times 10 to the negative 4. If you did not know this before, fractional exponents are the same as roots. So the square root is raising something to the one half power. If you did not know that before, now you do. The only reason I mention it now is because your textbook has this fractional exponent and a square root like it's a new thing. And it's actually the same as the multiplication factor. These fractional exponents. Your book thinks it's special. That's nice. So regardless, we can go ahead and take so we're going to need to do K2 raised to the one half power and then multiply it by K1. So there's two different things that we're doing. We're taking K1 and we're multiplying that by K2 raised to the one half power. So looking at the actual values we have, this is 50. Can I zoom out anymore? A little bit more. So this is 50 times the square root of 1 times 10 to the negative 4, which is the same thing as 50 times 1 times 10 to the negative 2, which does in fact just give me 0.5. So my value of K3 is 0.5. So it gives y'all some of the manipulations that we could possibly do. That's three of them. The last one is dealing with KP and KC. So let me actually just grab one of the K values we already had. So we already did, cool. So we already did this one where we had H2 as a gas plus actually, I do not want this one. Sorry. I'll show you why I didn't want that one in a minute. We'll do the other one. Nope, nope. Come on. Come on, fingers. 3H2 as a gas plus N2 as a gas 2NH3 as a gas, this one. And we'll assume our K value is will be kind of wacky, wonky. But what was it? What did I say it was? I made this up, 1.5 into the negative 22. We'll go ahead and assume that this is KC, 1.5 times to the negative 22. And we will assume that what we want is KP. So what we need is there is a relationship and frankly, And frankly, the way I usually remember this relationship is not by memorizing new things, but by remembering old things. So, we're going to take, this is PV equals RT from our gas law unit. So, I can take this. This is really then pressure is equal to molarity times RT. And the main trick we now need to do is we're going to worry about how many times we have to worry about RT. This is going to be KP is equal to KC times RT raised to the change in the moles of gas. I don't know why I put two S's there, guess. So, what we want is KP, we have KC. We need this change in moles of gas. So, we have this one point five times ten to the negative twenty-two. That's my KC. Then, R is the gas constant. I have it memorized, you do not have to have it memorized. It will be at the top of the page in potentially useful information. Oh, KP at, we'll just say three hundred Kelvin. Apologies, because for this, you do need a temperature. I always forget that. This is, this is the one thing I didn't prepare for. But I was like, oh, no, I forgot about this manipulation. So, we're doing this manipulation too. Times the temperature in Kelvin. So, R times TT, capital T is always temperature in Kelvin. As these be raised to the change in the moles of gas. So, this is going to be products minus reactants. Because anytime we talk about change, change is going to be equal to final minus initial, which in this case, our final is our two moles of gas. Our initial is our four moles of gas. So, that's two minus four, which is negative two. So, all that gets raised to the negative two power. We plug all of that into our calculator and that's going to be our final answer. And I will actually show you the other one and why I shied away from the other equation. It's not bad. So, KP is equal to three point six nine times ten to the negative twenty-one. Bunches of math, bunches of math. Now, here's the reason why I shied away from the other example and shied away from it really quickly. So, the other example I was gearing up for was this one. And I started to write it out and then I froze and changed my mind. And I think we said this, if we do it the same way, that KC is equal to... What was that value, something to the negative ninth, eight point five? We would set this up the same way. Let's say that we want KP at three hundred Kelvin. Same, same thing. KP is equal to KC times RT raised to the change in the moles of gas. Change of moles is equal to final minus initial. At the end, we have two. In the beginning, we have two, that is zero. So, in this case, KP is equal to KC times a bunch of stuff raised to the power of zero. If you've never plugged something into your calculator, once raised to the power of zero, this is just one. So, when the moles of gas are the same, then KP is just equal to KC. The temperature doesn't actually matter. So, KP would also be equal to eight point five times to the negative nine. So, I wanted to go ahead and do that one just because I wanted to show you that it does work. You can still do it. But I also wanted to take a moment to make sure we wrote out temperature in Kelvin and wrote out the gas constant because when they're the same, when the moles of gas on those sides are the same, KP and KC are the same. Makes the math a lot easier, but I was trying to demonstrate the math.
Somebody also wants to know if the setup for the rice table is the same for the morality and pressure?
Yes. So, essentially, whatever your rice table or ice table is, you want to have units in there that would feed back into K. Because the whole goal of any of these is that that last row is your equilibrium row. So, therefore, you either need to be in molarity or you need to be in pressure. But that's because that equilibrium row has got to be in whatever unit your K value is in. So, I did kind of gloss over that, so excellent question. But yeah, your equilibrium row is going to feed back into K. So, your units need to be the same as what's in K. So, I think Alex would occasionally give you all like moles and volume. And then you did have to put everything into molarity because molarity is what KC is in. So, you're not allowed to leave things in moles in your, in these tables, in the rice tables, the ice tables. Other questions so far?
Can we still watch your videos if we have a different chem teacher?
Yeah, absolutely. So, ta-da-da-da-da. So, here is general chemistry two. So, this is where you all take your exams. And this first folder, so there's a periodic table, there's a potentially useful information sheet. And here is your pre-recorded content. And all of these will take you to Microsoft Streams. I'm already logged in. But this is hanging out on the seven W one section. So, everybody does actually have access to these. The other thing, and I think, was, was I good? It says, these links will redirect you to Microsoft Streams. First, login with your UTD email address and password to office.com. So, basically, we're using Microsoft Streams for two reasons. One, it has captioning. Also, if you've never seen streams before, one of the best things about this is this is Microsoft's version of YouTube, which means as Microsoft's version of YouTube, it's got things like playback speed. And I understand that you may not want to hear us at double speed, but you could if you wanted to. But it has a transcript, it has subtitles, it has captions. So, that's, that's one reason. The other reason is the, is the other reason is because that's where all of our videos already were from last spring. And so, it was relatively straightforward to move them all over and put them in a place that everybody could access them. And I understand that there, there are many options, but the university provides this one. So, as far as ensuring that we're complying with whichever technological hoops the university asks. And they were, they were already there. They were already there. So, I know the living learning community uses YouTube, which frankly, I also think is fantastic because of the captioning. We're using streams because it is captioning and because the videos were already there. So, but yeah, they're in the course home page, pre-recorded content of the seven W one section. I realize that you all are always busy. But if you, if you haven't just like poked on every single folder that is hanging out in the seven W one section, just, just do that at some point. Like be hanging out with your friends and have, have the television on or music or something. But just, just click on every folder. Because I don't know if you've thought about this, but we have to add all those folders. I had to add all those folders. And I don't, I don't add them just because I thought it was fun. So, if you haven't, just, just consider, just, just click on everything because it's, it's there for you. It's, sometimes it's there for me so that I don't lose things, but it's usually there for you. Also, if it's there for me, you, you might want it. Because I fully admit occasionally, that's where I go to double check where stuff is. What else did I do? Oh, were there other questions before I just double checked my list?
Will we be going, will we be doing any KP to KC conversions?
Yes, I just did some. Yes. And, and I, yes. I, I just, I just did two. And yes, those are on your exam. So, yes.
That's all the questions we have so far?
So, can we go over example problems of changing KC? That is what we just did. Will there be a equilibrium questions using the ICE method? And furthermore, the quadratic formula, definitely using ICE. And I'll just restate, as far as the quadratic formula, I'm going to go ahead and say that you need it only because I know that not everybody recognizes things like the perfect square. And so, it's usually good to have in your back pocket just in case. This, this last one, we need to see a couple of different options. And then, depending on how many questions this one raises will depend on if we're doing successive approximation or not. Okay. So, question says, once you figure out which way the reaction will be shifting, can you figure out if the reaction is exothermic versus the reaction is endothermic? No. Here's again. Whenever we're talking about shifting, we are, come on, one note. This is a reference to Le Chatelier's principle. I think I'm missing things anyway, Le Chatelier's principle. Now, the thing is, is that there's a lot of different reasons why your equilibrium could shift. So, just using something that we've drawn before, the three H two as gas plus nitrogen as gas is an equilibrium with ammonia, that's a two. Ammonia as gas. So, when we talk about which way the reaction will be shifting, there's different reasons why it could shift. One of the reasons that this could shift is we could say, so first of all, Le Chatelier's, we assume that we start at equilibrium. So, we assume that everything is nice and happy exactly as it is. And then, dun, 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 we're going to perturb the system. Then, let's say we add more into gas. So, everything was fine and then we're just suddenly adding more into. Well, that means that we're adding a reactant. And so, as we add more reactant, we're going to wind up shifting to the right. Because suddenly we have more stuff on one side and sort of balance that out. We're going to be shifting away from where this new stuff was just dumped in. The other way to think about that though, is we could think about Q. And we could think about the fact that what's really happening here is we had everything happy at equilibrium. They didn't tell me what equilibrium was, but that's okay. And then suddenly, if we added more nitrogen, suddenly this value down here is going to be higher. The value on the bottom half of my fraction is suddenly greater. So, that means that Q should be small because the bottom half of my fraction got larger. So, when I look at Q versus K, K should be larger than Q. Because our bottom half of our fraction expanded. Q is smaller, K is larger. We're shifting towards products as a result. Now, we just figured out which way our reaction shifted based on some information. The question I was asked was, can you now figure out if that's exothermic versus endothermic? From all of this, no, because this had nothing to do with temperature. So, we don't have enough information from this example to figure out if the reaction was endothermic or exothermic. We just, we just don't know. The only piece of information we had is really about Q. And all of our equilibrium expressions could do that. Really doesn't matter if it's exothermic or endothermic. All we knew about was a product shifting or shifting two products. Now, that being said, if we had different information, so completely different problem. Because I don't like to make up if something's exothermic or endothermic, I'm just going to use A's and B's. So, if we had A goes to B, and I told you as part of the problem that when heat is added, this reaction shifts left. Is this endothermic or exothermic? Now, I have information about how their reaction changes with temperature. Now, I can figure this out. So, if you have information about shifting and temperature, then you could figure out if the reaction's exothermic or endothermic. Usually, we do it the other way around, which is we tell you the reaction's endothermic or exothermic and ask you how it shifts. So, what we would do is all we know is that when heat's added, the reaction shifts left. So, the reaction goes that way. So, shifting left is towards towards reactants. Towards reactants. So, left is towards reactants. And we are going to essentially treat heat as if it was a product or a reactant. So, just like we did in the previous example where it was, hey, we just dumped in some more of this stuff. It's going to shift away from wherever the dumping is. So, heat is added and the reaction shifted left. So, basically, we know then that our heat has to go on the product side. Because if the reaction's going to shift left, it's going to be shifting away from wherever the heat already was. So, my heat has to be on the product side in order for this statement to be true. Now that I know that my heat goes on the product side, that is indicative of an exothermic reaction. So, you can figure it out as long as you're given information about heat. But that would be the main trick is that the question that was submitted just said shifting. And I was like, ooh, that's a great question. Because if it's just about shifting, some of those shifts are about K and Q. Some of those are not. So, also a reminder that whenever you're talking about heat being added, what's really happening here is K is changing. So, even though we go ahead and we solve this as if heat was a product, because the logic works beautifully. It, it works perfectly. This is why we always do it this way. But technically, conceptually, K is actually what's changing because K is temperature dependent. Other questions?
We have practiced from KP to KC conversions, but will we be doing any KC to KP conversions?
Oh, you all know how to do algebra? Sure. Yeah, absolutely. You can do algebra. I believe in you. It's not a problem. I apologize that I, I did not, I missed, I misheard the question the first time. So, let's do, I just need different moles of gas.
I said it wrong.
No, you probably said it correctly because honestly, unless, so some of, some folks who see me in office hours have seen me do this. Where we're all, I'll like point to a piece of paper when we're in person. I'll be like, I need you to write that down for me. And that's honestly because I, if you say something out loud, sometimes my brain can't quite figure out what order everything was in. So, my, I can't always understand what's happening because it, I need to like see it written down. So, I think that's just the problem that we ran into. You probably said it correctly and it was, it was me. So, yeah, no.
Only the recording will tell us.
That's fine, that's fine. So, yeah, so let's assume, we want to go the other way. So, let's assume that what's actually given is a KC value. I am making this up as I go along. KC can just be twenty-five. And we need And uh, we need therefore to know KP at a temperature, uh, let's do two ninety eight. Kelvin. Uh, I'm going to give everything in Kelvin to make my life easier. So. Oh, no, backwards. I keep doing it the wrong way. Sorry. Uh, all we're, all we're going to do is just change these. Cause C, C, KP, KC, fix it. So. I want to be given KP and I want to solve for KC. They just sound the same. Um, okay. So we're using relatively straightforward numbers to make my life easier. Um. So. But the goal now is to solve for KC. We are, so we are solving for the other one. My apologies. Uh, we're all, we're solving for the other one. So I'm going to grab R from potentially useful information. So that is zero point zero eight two O six, technically liters, atmospheres, moles, Kelvin. And then I want KC. I have KP. So KP is twenty five, KC is what I'm solving for. This is two R. Two O six times two ninety eight. That's my T times a chain, uh, raised to the exponent of the change in moles of gas. That's final minus initial. Which is three moles of gas minus two moles of gas. That's a positive one. So it's just raised to the first power then. Um, so then as I do this. Uh, zero point eight two O six times two ninety eight. Uh, so. Sorry, I'm laughing because I, I made this up. Um. So all of this stuff in parentheses is twenty four point four five three eight eight. Uh, so I just need to divide both sides by that number. Uh, and I get one point O two, three six bigs done, uh, is equal to KC. So yes, you could definitely do it the other way. Um, you just work, work the equation essentially. So just plug everything in and then you're just solving for a different value. In the equation, but yes. Yes, you absolutely can solve for the other one. We'll just say that, solve for the other one. Definitely works. Other questions so far? So the successive approximation thing. So this is an example of where. So first of all, this has a whole bunch of stuff in it that we will be talking about this week. So first of all, it asks for pH. Uh, P of whatever is equal to negative log of whatever. So pH is equal to the negative log of your proton concentration. P O H would be equal to the negative log of your hydroxide concentration. Uh, PKW would be equal to the negative log of your value of KW. PKA would be equal to the negative log of your KA value. So we want pH, so we're going to be using, so pH actually tells me that I want this thing. But uh, they do this weird thing where they don't give you a reaction, but they give you a KA value. This is dependent on the fact that you know that this thing, because it's got a proton, hydrogen front, this is an acid. So for practice, I'm going to go ahead and write this thing out. And that what's happening is this is dissociating. Uh, it is ionizing. Ionizing technically. Into H plus and the rest of this. Um, C two, H two, O two, CL minus. Right? Um. The KA value is the equilibrium constant of this reaction. KA values are the acid ionization constants. And what they basically say is they are assuming that this thing starts off as a reactant altogether. And is an equilibrium with its uh ionized pieces. So KA actually assumes the chemical reaction. So that's how I know that that chemical reaction is exactly what it is. It's part of the definition of KA. Then it tells me that I have this amount of solution. So we are still, because basically if I want pH, I want the concentration of H plus. That's this thing. I don't want just the concentration of H plus. I want the concentration of H plus at equilibrium. So I have initially some amount of this and then in solution. Initially, I don't have any of these, but what's going to happen is this will go away and I'll have some of this up here. So this is zero point zero one minus X and then this is X and this is X. So. We're setting up for, to do exactly what we've done before. I had a K value, I know technically it's a KA, one point four times ten to the negative three. And that's going to be equal to my products, that's X times X, which is X squared, all divided by zero point zero one minus X. Now. Some things to help us algebraically, because the perfect square will not work here. But some things to help us algebraically. K is kind of small, uh, so K does tell me that I should be reactant favored. That's cool. And tells me that I should be reactant favored. So X, so K is small in the direction that I'm going. That is a true statement. K is small in the direction that I'm going. So we could go ahead. And start off with the X's small approximation. Because K, K is small in the direction I'm going. Now, you can kind of hear it in my voice already. Really what's going to happen is K is small, but it's not that small. And what's really worrisome is my initial concentration is small. So K is relatively small. So KA is this ten to the negative three. My initial concentration is ten to the negative two. So there's not a big difference in between my KA value and between my initial concentration. Which means a small change could actually still be a really significant amount. Uh, because of how very small my initial concentration is. So what we're going to go ahead and do is what we would have done before because we can't use. I don't really want to do quadratic, but we could, we could do quadratic. Um, and I don't, I can't use the perfect square. So we're going to go ahead and use the X's small approximation. So let's go ahead and say that X is equal to zero. Let's see what happens. One point four times to the negative three is equal to X squared. This then becomes zero point O one minus zero. So one point four times ten to the negative three equals X squared divided by zero point O one. Times one point four, negative three. So. I get one point four times ten to the negative five. Doesn't this look lovely? Uh, X squared, and then I can square root both of those. And X equals three point seven four. One, seven times ten to the negative three. Technically, uh, so then I want to do that checking my percentage. So here's my X value. And scrolling back over, my initial concentration is point O one. That's the nice thing now is that the only initial thing I have, my change, everything's a one to one. Value. So my choices are limited. So three point seven four one seven times ten to the negative three. Divided by point O one. Times a hundred. And this is a change of about thirty seven percent. That is more than five. So X's small approximation does not work. There's two options. Option one. Is to use the quadratic. Option two is successive approximations. And here's what that is. I know we're at six o'clock, but here's what that is. So we basically did a whole bunch of math. To find out. A value of X, but we know that this value of X is wrong. But. We could go ahead and use what we know because this value is assuming that it, X was zero and we're like, well, so this isn't great. But what we could do is we could go ahead and plug this X back in over here. Cause we assumed that X was, that that X, that that change was zero and we know that that's wrong. But turns out. That it's a long, it's a, it's an assumption that we can make to get started. So what we can do is we can plug this back in and do all of the math again. That's why it's called successive approximations. Sorry. That's why it's called successive approximations. Um. So essentially what you would do is you would take that. All of this jazz, one point four times ten to the negative three equals. X squared divided by zero point O one minus X. And now, one point four times ten to the negative three equals X squared divided by zero point zero one minus. Three point seven four. One, seven times ten to the negative three. So we're taking that change X, this thing that we assumed was zero before, and we're using our previous value. And then we do all the math again. And we do it one more time. So you find. So you basically find this value of X three times for us. And you just plug it in and you do all the math again. Um, and so you would solve for this, you would get X two. And then we would take X two and plug that in again, and we do all the math again, and you'd get X three. And for us, we're just going to assume that this is the answer. Uh, I have friends in the math department that I do not have this conversation with because they would cringe. That like you're just going to do it three times and assume that you're right. Yeah, that's what we're going to do. Um, and part of that honestly is because the times where y'all would use successive approximations, we're. Going to just make sure that that works. Um. And if you use successive approximation on a regular approximation problem, what you would find is your X. Two and X three values would actually be the same as your X one values. So technically, anytime you do approximation, you could always do successive approximation. It would be a lot more algebra, um, and you would just see the same value, uh, because essentially what's happening is, uh. The values are converging on the actual value. Uh, so. Uh, I realized that I did not finish this problem. Good news, we talked about where the pre-recorded content is in the seven W one section. And we talked about the fact that there's a video to talk about successive approximation. And. This is the same problem. Uh, so Dr. Deekman's video, so Dr. Deekman's actually the one that recorded these. Uh, and so the. Uh, example that I started is actually this exact same numbers and the exact same one that he did. So I understand that I explained, but I didn't actually do all of the math. Uh, he also has the same tablet set up, so he actually does go ahead and finish this one out. Um, so what I would recommend since we're at, oh, we're over six o'clock, you know, um. I only say that because uh, I know we've got fabulous folks from the living learning community and they uh, are working on a Sunday. I usually work on Sundays, but they don't. So anyway, uh, so this, this is set up, it's the exact same problem. Uh, so you can go ahead and watch that one on your own time and at your own speed, and that's what successive approximation is. Uh, so we got started down that road and I did mindfully have the same prompt so that that way if we did it, I could show you guys over the video. Other wrap up questions? If you're telling me things, you're muted.
Yeah, I think that's all the questions we had so far.
Okay.
Um. That's it. We don't have any more questions.
Okay, no.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Absolutely. Have a wonderful night.
You. Thank you everyone for joining.